Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 28th, 2016 special meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us. This time, I would ask that Ms. LaMagna review the procedures for this afternoon's meeting.
Good evening. This is a special meeting of the City Commission to discuss homeless issues. The agenda for tonight's meeting is available in the front of the room on the table to my right. Any exhibits pertaining to the agenda are posted on the bulletin board, and please feel free to view those exhibits during, anytime during tonight's meeting. Thank you.
May we have a roll call, Ms. LaMagna?
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
We will now have our invocation led by Commissioner Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Woods. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Daytona Beach. We ask that you give us wisdom, guidance, and understanding as we go about the people's business this evening, in your precious Son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And we will now move on to item number four, which is the discussion by the City Commission regarding the homeless issues.
Okay, Mr. Manager, please frame the meeting for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we've been through a time of study and discovery on options for housing associated with the homeless population in our community. We've had a pretty good discussion in our last meeting of the City Commission, and reflecting all those things, and then going back and providing a more detailed informational report on other options for interim housing for short-term services to the homeless. We provide you a copy of the, of properties that would somewhat meet that, you know, that need, at the same time try to identify costs associated with it, and not, in every case, we didn't identify the total cost associated with it, but it gives you an idea of what is out there and what you could expect from the city. Without going too deep into it, we've now been through a period of time where we looked at long-term housing, shelter operations, we've looked at locations for a shelter, we've had recommendations from a homeless coalition group on what options that they would see, and then we had a, we had a presentation last Thursday, the mayor and I attended, from Housing First, on Housing First programs, and seems to be the program that is being funded primarily by the federal and the state government, and recommended by them, and recommended by the state agency that's associated with Housing First programs. What that does, instead of taking the homeless population and placing them in a shelter, it places them in the Housing First immediately, and it, then, the services provided, be provided by the agencies, much like the Salvation Army provided to the veterans in their veterans' program, where they did an intake, did the, the case management, and ultimately the placement of those individuals in various housing elements. So I want you to think about that as you look at these options, because I think if we followed the model established by the Salvation Army and the veterans' program, which was very successful, and, and not pursue necessarily the long-term intake facility that would be a, a shelter for the homeless, but rather put them in rapid housing as fast as possible. Now, that's what's recommended by Housing, Housing First, that's what's recommended by the state and the federal government, that some of the programs are funded by both those agencies. A way that we could be effective in implementing that program would be to set aside an amount of money, such as what we have currently set aside, $300,000 annually, for that purpose, and then participate with those agencies that qualify for the program through the COC, the, and the state and federal government, in rapid and Housing First programs currently that exist, and operate as a grant program, rather than us being in the program of providing a shelter. So that's an option, it's probably, it, it's not one that we, we spend a great deal of time looking at. We've looked at these programs all over the country. Everybody has a different option, everybody has a different view of what's, what's workable, and I think it comes down to you have to find what, what's workable in your community. And in our case, when you look at the, at the homeless population, the needs of the population, where they're coming from, it's not just Daytona Beach, it's, it's a, a more of a county-wide issue that has to be dealt with. And the, we have some reluctant participants, and then we have some that are not participating in, in solutions for the homeless. And maybe this focuses our attention on the population that's in Daytona Beach, and focuses it, the efforts in a way that gets them into housing, and under a program that is, that would be structured with the model that we had with the veterans' program through the Salvation Army, would be an option that might be attractive to you. So I offer that up, just for discussion purposes, if nothing else. But in the meantime, if you want to talk about any of the options, the location of a short-term facility, you have a report before you that, where we looked at all these facilities, in every case, the expense of that will exceed the $300,000 that we're talking about. It would not exceed it in the, in the startup, but it would over the, over the term of it. And what Housing First really takes that, that upfront cost out of the picture, and it focuses on the delivery of service rather than the assets necessary to deliver the service. So give it some thought. If you have any questions about any of the sites that were, that we investigated and looked at, we'd be happy to discuss those with you, or do further investigation if But I want you to give some thought to that as an alternative. I think it might be one that works well, and the agencies that work, that work with those programs are well-first, they're successful. Salvation Army is, as you know, all of us know, that we worked hand in glove with them from the very beginning, and they, they proved that there's over 100, I was looking for the latest number, but there's over 100 participants in that program, 186?
Well, there's a, there's a total of 269 that were sleeping on the streets at the start of the Bridge Bed Program that now have permanent housing.
Right. That's, that's what I was looking for.
That's the number.
So that's, that's proof that it works.
Roof over their head.
So I guess, I think we've all spent hours, time, money, and effort trying to find a solution that works, and, and maybe we have the solution right in front of us, and we just, you know, fail to, to jump on it. And I'm thinking now that's where we ought to be concentrating. So whatever, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the information we provided, and the comments that I've made, be happy to provide any assistance I can to help the decision that is coming ahead of us.
You know, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
For the purpose of this meeting, I, I think it's important that we focus on the short-term solution, because we have a deadline coming on Monday that we need to address. You know, going back and starting over with, you know, a different model, you know, is certainly something we should consider all options. I, I agree with having those discussions, but, you know, I think the, the purpose in today's meeting is, you know, we had a deadline this past Tuesday, you know, two days ago, that, that the Salvation Army was gracious enough to, to extend for us a few days, but, you know, I think that we need to decide whether or not we want to, you know, do something on a temporary basis, and if so, where. You know, I, I went by four of these properties today, and, you know, kind of have, have some opinions on the suitability for some of those, but I don't think necessarily that getting into a safe harbor versus first step versus, you know, Housing First discussion today is something that would be as fruitful as a discussion about what we want to do on Monday.
Well, but...
That's fine, but I think at some point, and it might be tonight, that we have to, because we, we, we can't keep kicking it down the road, but we do have to first deal with the immediate, but I also would like to have a plan.
But I think you can't separate the two. And I'm sorry that I went on vacation last week, because I would have brought this up. You cannot separate the short-term solution from the long-term solution, okay? Because if you're going to go spend the money for the temporary, you have to make the commitment, and it's millions of dollars, for the long-term, okay? Because what's the point of spending all the money for the short-term if you're not going to build the shelter? Now, do I think 86 people should be put on the street next week? Absolutely not. But there's also other, some other possible options to do some interim things if you, if you choose to look further at the Housing First model. The reality is, if we choose to do a shelter, we have to be willing to put in millions of dollars. We cannot depend on the county, we can want it all day long. We cannot depend on the county, and we cannot depend on the other cities to come up with the $800,000 a year to operate it. So this commission needs to make a very fundamental decision, and they need to make it, in my opinion, Rob, now. Okay? In terms of, because if we're going to go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to open an interim facility, you need to decide what are you going to do in the long-term, okay? If we're not going to do a permanent shelter somewhere, then we need to decide how to transition those people that are in the facility right now, not put them on the street. You can do hotels, there's a multitude, I mean, not a multitude, but there's a variety of ways you could handle it in the short-term, very quickly go to get something else going, to get them into permanent housing, if you're not going to spend two or three million dollars to build a building. And that's what I'm saying to you, we really need to think long and hard and say, if we're going to do this, and do the shelter, then you need to be committed, and you need to be committed to put that kind of money into it. It's a lot of money, and this city will be on the hook for it, okay? We can go get other sources of funds. So that's why I'm saying to you, this is where the rubber meets the road, Rob, it really is.
And I totally agree. And, and one of my comments at last Wednesday's workshop was that we simply cannot afford to foot the bill for the entire thing. You know, the only way in my mind the long-term shelter works is if the county steps up and says, "We'll, we'll put up the $2 million bucks to get it built." They, they appear amenable to discussions related to, you know, an annexation to be, you know, to allow us to do that, and that we commit $400,000 a year to operate what would probably be about 40 beds, and that we would commit to seeking other funding sources to have up to 100 beds. If the county would agree to that, I think we can move forward with the long-term shelter. If the county can't agree to that, then I think the long-term shelter is dead. I don't think there's anything we can do. There's no way that we can, I mean, we, we run our millage rate to 10, to the state maximum, and still not be able to afford this. So, you know, I agree with you, they have to go hand in hand. You know, if, if we, if we want to try and do something different strategically for the long-term, I'm, I'm willing to have those discussions, but I, I guess the first question, and you bring, you bring up a good point, do we want to even move forward with temporary shelter, or do we want to simply come up with a way to help those 86 people that are currently in the program, transition out of the program, and then, you know, kind of start fresh?
I got, I got a question for Jim. Jim, how long would it take for us to get the Housing First program up and running, or, and how difficult, how difficult of a task is that for you guys?
Um, the Housing First program, you know, the Salvation Army has, has run this program. You know, they, they, they run a variety, some semblance of that program that was funded by the federal government for the last two years. And so they're pretty much geared for that kind of a program. In fact, I think they've got funding. Did they get funding this year?
Well, let me, you have some other information in front of you. Jeff White, who's here from the Volusia Flagler County Coalition for the Homeless and oversees the ranking and review. If you chose to pursue that, you'd have to adopt a process. We would not do it as a city government, that's not our role. But you would use best practices that have already been established. Of course, you'd have to get them to agree to do it. So I mean, again, this is not done, but what you would do is you'd figure out how you would do it, provide oversight, desired outcomes, who you'd want to target. Personally, if we were to talk about doing this even further, I would want to do rapid rehousing, which would, would help those that are not in that chronically homeless definition, more of the people we get the complaints on. We would determine who the population would be that would be served, but you would use the model that's been used for the veterans, with the outreach, with the case management, and scattered site housing. It could be implemented if everybody agreed to help fairly quickly. We could do an interim, you know, housing in, let's say, for example, motels, hotels in our city in Ridgewood, to not put the 86 people out on the street. And then, quite frankly, in my opinion, they should receive priority eligibility for whatever funding program we would fund, okay? Would be those, those 86.
Okay. I, I got another, I'm just going to throw this out, because I've been having some conversation with the Housing Authority. They have resources and expertise in areas that I think we just have not looked at, and they have access to funding that I think some of these other agencies don't have access to. I'm just going to throw this out there, that maybe we need to at least have that conversation with them and find out how they can help us, even if it's just to find funding to do this, bring them in in some kind of manner as a small partner to, to, to kind of help us make this happen.
They are a part of it. That homeless strategy meeting that I bring you information on, the Housing Authority is a part of it. We have a draft MOU, I don't know if anybody's here today, from the Housing Authority, in which, right now, Halifax Urban Ministries and Salvation Army would do agreements with the Hou, and we would have 50 designated vouchers that would go to homeless, that would be referred by those agencies that we have the MOUs with. They would provide case management, because that's the stipulation that they need, we all know it, case management, and then they would have priority to either go into Section 8 or into the public housing units. We're already working with the Daytona Beach Housing Authority.
I, I was looking at the cost of all these facilities, what it's going to cost us just off the, off the, off the ground, just to get them going. So this is what I'm thinking in my mind. If we spend $300,000, how do we best get more bang for our buck with that $300,000? Do we get more bang for our buck by going with some rapid rehousing-type program? Or do we put a bunch of money up for a temporary place that we may not never recover that money, because we won't own the buildings, probably something we leasing? So I'm, you know, that's, that's where I am right now.
And you would actually do a request for a proposal, because Halifax Urban Ministries and Salvation Army both do rapid rehousing. They both have programs in the community. So again, you would look at, here's the money, this is what we want, this is the criteria, they would apply, they would be scored, and then it would, it's, it, the infrastructure's already in place.
Right.
My concern with the temporary shelters and all the stuff we're looking at, it's a lot of money, we can't do it by Monday. You know, I'm looking at, trying to figure out what we can do by Monday. And so I'm going to recommend to you, regardless of what we decide today, that, that we look at having some hotel rooms in place for people to go to. That's what I'm going to say to y'all today, we need to do that, so that we can try to work out, you know, whatever else we want to do, and put those 86 individuals in different rooms, especially, yeah.
Well, my concern, I mean, I'm not against that, Pam. But I, I need, I, I want to know what it's going to cost us per week to run something.
Well, you need to know that, but that's why if you chose to do that, and you chose to look at doing a rapid rehousing model, you would need then to, as quickly as possible, get that up and running, and then you would start moving them into the permanent scattered sites, housing sites. And you get, you've got to get the process in place.
Pam, I think, aren't the, the funding agencies, the, aren't, aren't they in the process now of evaluating who's going to be funded for rapid rehousing?
For the house in the coming year. Jeff, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to. Will you come up, please, Jeff White? And just, they just had a meeting yesterday on challenge grant funding, and then the HUD grant, the NOFA, for the HUD, federal HUD funding comes up. You have in front of you, I, where the funding is now and who does rapid rehousing, and it's got the dates on there, right? When would any new additional funds be available for what we're talking about, rapid rehousing and HUD, in addition to what we're trying to do?
Jeff White with Volusia Flagler Coalition for the Homeless. We're going into competition for the fiscal year 1718, so what you have in front of you is the grant inventory listing of what will be in place throughout 2017, which will end in 2017, 2016 to 17. So any new funding that we apply for through this competition will initiate following the end of this, you know, like for the renewals, when the renewals end, they'll be renewed, or if we reallocate funding, it will start in fiscal year 17 through 18 of the grant term. However, HUD designates the start date of that grant. As far as the challenge grant and rapid rehousing, that grant will be submitted on the 10th of August, and the allocation for this year that the COC can apply for is $300,000. I expect that we will be fully funded, and according to the allocations that we came up with yesterday, it's pretty equally split, plus or minus, between Salvation Army, Halifax Urban Ministries, and Neighborhood Center of West Volusia. That provides, you know, a good source of rapid rehousing funds, albeit, you know, limited, and, you know, that will go into effect anywhere between, depending on how deep, how fast DCF works, this November, December, probably, the fiscal year 1617 will start, and those grants have to be expended by the end of the, by the end of June 30th, 2017. We also applied for ESG funding, rapid rehousing prevention, as well as some emergency shelter support. That was a $250,000 grant. We're waiting to see, to hear, we're waiting for DCF to respond, whether or not we got fully funded. And a small piece of the puzzle is a tenant grant for prevention. So, you know, those are the state grants that are in play, the federal grants this year and this year's competition, because, because HUD is looking primarily, their next goal is to end chronically homeless, to end chronic homelessness by 2017. So they're really, really focusing on permanent supportive housing. To put a grant in for rapid rehousing, you really have to make a good case in your community why it would supersede the chronically homeless population at this point in time. In order to end chronic homelessness by 2017, which is HUD's goal, they want, you know, communities to really pour their resources into housing first for chronically homeless families and individuals. So, you know, we're looking to actually, if we reallocate, reallocate to chronic homeless permanent supportive housing. The agencies, you know, we're talking with each other on the best, you know, course of action to create, you know, not only permanent supportive housing for individuals, but also for families, and because it is a competition, we're asking everybody to step up and submit grants, so that, you know, when it comes down to making our choices, we have several different options to go by and through.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, the challenge grants, they're, they're probably in the last cycle of funds available for this program.
The challenge grant this year, yeah, it, it has been extended through September 30th.
It has.
And majority of the agencies have spent down most of their money. There are still some that are, you know, a little bit lagged behind others, but everybody's on track to, you know, wind up by September 30th of this year.
Thank you. And it is the challenge grant funds that the majority of the individuals in the Bridge Bed Programs were used, Salvation Army and used some of their other slots, like our Streets Team, you know, My Place Apartments, that's, that's on this list, I don't know if it's on this list, but...
Well, that's a HUD-funded program.
It's a HUD-funded program. So we took existing pots of money and used it to move those peoples in, people, individuals in the shelter into permanent supportive housing, or some went to transitional, you know, housing as well.
The thing I want to, you know, mention is that agencies, agencies have been resourceful in, in combining their grants and putting their funding together in order to, to get people housed, like Salvation Army will use, if they run out of rent money, or money for rent and utilities, they're, they're helping people that maybe have some means through case management to get into housing and supporting them in that way. So there's various ways on which, you know, all these grants support people going into housing. Some people need more help than others, and they need that help through case management. Others need that monetary support to start, you know, to get them started into housing and to keep them going for a while. So, you know, it's a, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's a mix and match, it's individualized, and you have to look at every individual, every family, and what, how they fit the need. And that's kind of where the SPADA prioritization tool comes in, that kind of identifies what's going to work best for what families, and, you know, matches that, that option with the family, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. So, and again, the coalition, you may want to ask him a question about the coalition.
No, I got a question for you, Pam.
Thank you. Yeah.
What are you going to, what are you suggesting, would that put us part of the compliant?
There's a way to deal with that, yeah, you can do that. I mean, there is a way to deal with what you need to do.
We would reserve beds that would, that would allow us to be in compliance with that.
Where would we reserve beds at?
Hotels.
Yeah. We can do that, other cities do that, I can tell you, they do that right now. There's a way, there's a way to handle that, because we, that, you've got to be, you've got to be that. I think, I got to be honest with y'all, I didn't think about even considering this until talking to Jim this week, when I started looking at this, when I got back and looked at the total cost, and I looked at, because I called Jim yesterday, and I said, $1.2 million, for what? I mean, it was the construction cost, and I started looking at the construction cost and how much that is, and that's, that's not services, that's buildings. And then I looked at the cost for the interim facility and how much that would be, and we still have got to, regardless of if we chose to do this, you got to have places for people to go. You got to have beds, you got, and we are all trying to work at everybody's resources. The Housing Authority is a key part of our homeless strategy team that, that we've been working with, and it's, it's trying to get them into beds that are there. So does it make sense in the end to put $3 million in a building, whether it's short-term or long-term, versus $3 million that could go to scattered site and, you know, rapid rehousing? Again, rapid rehousing has a lower threshold for service than Housing First, and that would be, you know, what you'd look at. The last thing I'm going to say about it, and then I'm going to be quiet, is that the county has not wanted to build a building, and they've thrown out Housing First, and they've thrown out rapid rehousing. If we were to choose to do something different, we need to go to them and say, "You don't want to do a building, you never did, we're going to..." We listened to what everybody said. Y'all need to be putting money in the pool to support programs like this, too. The same thing with the other cities that would support the shelter, they need to continue to commit to provide services and, and do a rapid rehousing model. Money shouldn't go away, it's just being delivered in a different way. Got to have a way for people to go in someplace immediately. So again, when it's set up and, and functioning the way it should, outreach workers would take them directly off the street into motels, and then get them into permanent housing as quick as you could, if that's what's appropriate. They may need to go to ALF, they may need, you know, something else, but you'd, you'd use that model. So I'm done talking.
Commissioner White?
Sure. I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of going back to, I think, one of the presentations that was done in the mayor's roundtable, and they were talking about Housing First and rapid rehousing, and there was still an emergency shelter component to it. So how do we, how do we move forward with anything without some sort of emergency shelter plan where people wait until they qualify for a bed, or, how does that work?
But what you would do is what they did with the veterans' program, and they moved them off the street immediately. Mike Cornell, shake your head if I'm saying it correctly.
If you're a veteran, you get moved off the...
And so what I'm saying to you is you would do that model, okay? You go outreach, you want to bring them in, you would move them into a hotel room, okay? And then you would move them into permanent. I think the timeframe now is within a week or a few weeks.
As far as permanent housing, within three weeks.
Yeah, within.
I think somebody turned around eight hours.
Yeah, so they, they can do it. So it's getting a system in place. So it goes back to, do you want to do bricks and mortar that serves that function, or do you, you know, want to do? It, it really goes back to how much money do you want to spend, Kelly?
Right. And so the bricks, there's still bricks and mortars, it's just a scattered site brick and mortar.
Yes, it's a scattered site.
Okay.
And those sites are scattered all over your, your community.
Sure. They're not concentrated.
They're not concentrated in one place necessarily.
And that way you don't have the NIMBYism, because you, you would use scattered sites. And you do scattered sites for your permanent housing. Again, the whole model is not to concentrate in any one area. You would, and again, coordinating with the other cities, it'd be scattered site housing through the whole county, and you wouldn't concentrate it in any one community or neighborhood. That's the advantage, if you do it correctly.
All right. So this is a new kind of direction that we're talking about, possibly going as a commission. I came in here very, kind of back to, you know, go back to the contract, go back to where we started, and if you just let me remind us where we started, was on a plan to do something that was long-term, a centralized facility that could do emergency intake, that would allow us to give people an immediate place to sleep and to eat and to, to do what they are currently doing on the streets of our city and our county. And we did get distracted from that because of the situation at the wall. I, I would love to go back to where we, we started and go back to that contract and go back to the county. I, I do think that we're going to need a, some sort of emerg- I, I do think that we're going to need some sort of emergency shelter in this county. It seems to be an integral part of any housing-first city that I've, I've seen, and I'm not the expert, I would say that, but it, that seems to be part of the continuum, is where do you, where's the intake? Where do you take people immediately? And, you know, we see the people on the streets every day that need to be taken somewhere immediately. So I would hate to lose this opportunity that we have to actually create that emergency shelter. I don't think we ever created master intake or central intake in this, in this area, and it, it seems to be showing that there isn't that. Nobody can answer the question, where do you take somebody that is in jail or the hospital when you're picking them up in a park in the middle of the night? I mean, where do you take them? So it needs to.
They're saying that you take them to a, to a, to a hotel or motel.
Okay, well, this is new, this is a new kind of answer, but if we've had this answer, we haven't been doing that in the last couple of years. So I'm curious to hear where you're at, if, you know, I may be totally off-base to think that we would, we would go back to where we started with the county and look at really doing this the way that we intended to when we began. But that's, that was the conversation I was, I would hope that we would have.
Okay. Someone want to weigh in on that? She's asking where we are in, with regards to our original discussion, because I, like her, certainly didn't come with the expectation that the discussion would not include some form of a shelter at the end of the day, because I, this is a new discussion for me as well. So we're, she'd like to know where others are. Ms. Traeger?
I don't know if you have, there are times when you cannot bring anybody to the hospital or something, you have to bring them somewhere they, they could either get themselves together, get themselves off of, oops, get themselves off of addiction. Stuart Marchman, are they open to us taking certain individuals out there, or do they have to be referred to someone? Because the Salvation Army, from what I understood, they have like a point system on whether you can get accepted or not. And I thought the premise of the Safe Harbor was that everyone was welcome, whoever, come as you are, come in. And I think we're probably going to need that for something, maybe if, I really don't know.
I, I don't know that our shelter was going to necessarily be able to, to just be, come as you are, but I certainly think that what was taking place at the Salvation Army, I was thinking that our shelter would be able to kind of fulfill that role, and I'd see what was taking place there as moving people to permanent housing.
The only thing is, with permanent housing, do you get case management, too?
Yes, you would have to. You have to. That has to be part of the mix.
Because that's going to be a key part of whatever program.
Now, here's the difference, Kelly, from what you're talking about from before. The city did not have funds budgeted to do this. So you would be making a conscious decision to place people in hotels, you would be making a conscious decision that this is how you would handle this. We've not done that. We've not committed to do that before. That's why we've had some of the issues we've had, okay? And so we thought the shelter was the answer, but we, until it's open, we still have not committed to do that immediate kind of thing. So that's what I'm saying. If there is truly a shift in how we're going to address it, and we make a commitment to do that, and then we, we get it up and running, then some of those things you expressed would be answered.
Are you asking, just so I understand, you're saying in the short term, you would take people to hotels?
And, well, y'all would have to decide what you want to do. I'm saying, Jim, answer from the, it's a big question.
Yeah, my, what we did, let's take the interim funding that we did this 90 days we had there, and we had a provision in the last contract that said they had to maintain 10 beds, Pottinger compliant for us, or if they did not have the beds, the city would pay for that, that individual to be into a hotel.
Right.
And that was the program, and that's similar to what you're looking at right now. The Salvation Army operated program where they did the intake, where they did the case management, and they moved them within that first three weeks to supportive housing and then ultimately into permanent housing. So that program was working for, it worked for the, for the Veterans Program. It worked somewhat for the program that we, we had in place for that first 90 days. And all this says is, if you do, if you take the, the rapid rehousing and housing first program, they're going to do the very thing, same thing they've been doing, and they're going to have federal money and state money involved in, in parts of that program. And what we're doing is supplementing the, the effort with a broader range of services to some of those that were not included in the, in the, for housing first program.
So they didn't qualify for.
Yes.
Right.
We would have to have a lower threshold for service to meet our needs.
Is there a program for a single adult who is not disabled?
Yeah.
That's what this would be.
Yes, that's it.
You heard, you heard Jeff talk about the chronically homeless and the Fed's guidelines. Our program, I would hope, if you chose to do that, even if we, we did the shelter, would be for those individuals that don't necessarily meet that, okay? Because those are our needs for our community, and it's our dollars that are going for that, okay? So that's single male or single female. We have men and women that are in the Bridge Bed Program right now, what, 47, that are going to work every day. And they might or might not meet that definition of chronically homeless, okay? But we would still want to serve them. That's why I said you would, you would do the services the way the best practices show you, but we would dictate the population that we want served, and then we would determine how we would address Pottinger compliant. The key difference, I'm saying to you, is we didn't commit the funds before. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because if we really want to do the shelter, we need to be willing to commit the millions of dollars that it's going to take, because we cannot count on the county to give it to us. So we, as a body, have to say, we are committed to do this. And that's what I'm saying to y'all, be sure and be clear, because once you start down that path, I don't think you should go back. You need to commit one way or another, okay? That, that's all I'm trying to get you to realize is, decide if you want to spend $3 or $4 million to do this, because that's what it's going to take. Assume nothing from the county. Ask, but assume nothing. And if that's what we think is the best thing to do, and then I'm offering as an alternative to just say, look at this. If you don't, if you aren't comfortable committing $3 million, then look at the other. That's all I'm trying to get you to do today, okay?
I understand that. Uh, we, we all, we all understand that. And I think that's a good point. So we, I think, and I think that's an answer that we need to, that's a decision that we kind of need to make tonight.
Yes.
How much of a burden is this going to be on our residents?
Well, we'll, if it's, he'd have to tell us the exact number, but if it's $2 million, if it's $3 million, that's what it could be. It could be less. But at the end of the day, it, it might be that much of a burden. And so we have to decide whether we're willing to make that commitment without help, with the hope that we get help. And that's, so that's, that's a part of it.
Yeah, I was going, I was going to weigh in on, and I understand clearly what Kelly is saying. And I'm going to weigh in, just where I stand. I'm not willing to, to take taxpayers' money, $3 to $4 million to build a shelter, that then we're not even looking at the operational cost and what that's going to cost a year. I, I would lean more toward to look at the money and see what, what we get for the money not building a shelter, and comparing it that way. So if it costs us, we said $400,000 what the city was willing to put in, but I'm, I'm thinking if we built a shelter, it's going to cost much more money than that to run the shelter. And I really don't think these other cities are going to put in the kind of money we need or the county to run the thing. So, you know.
So you're, you're not?
I, I'm not committed to putting millions of dollars into a permanent shelter, where the city of Daytona Beach would run, would be totally responsible for the money. Not at this time. I am not willing to go on record of saying I would do that right now.
Okay.
So I'm looking at, I'm willing to look at alternate ways of doing this. But, you know, if, if the staff came and said, we got this kind of commitment from the county, we got a commitment from this city, that city, and all the money in the pot, and I said, okay, well, maybe we can do it that way. But right now, as it stands, we need something in place rather quickly. But the long-term, you know, standalone shelter, right now is not an option for me.
Okay. Commissioner Gill, there?
And to touch on something that Ruth was, Pat, Ruth was going down there, you know, what's it going to do to the taxpayers? So we currently have $400,000 budget, budgeted for, you know, homeless initiatives. So if we maintain that level, then it doesn't create any additional burden on the taxpayer than what, what we currently are doing today. And, and I'm fine, reluctantly so, to, to keep it at that amount. I still think that's an excessive amount of money for a community that only brings in $24 million a year in property taxes. You know, but there's, there's a big need, and we need to do what we can to help everybody in the community, regardless of their means. We can't dedicate $400,000 to this because we have other homeless needs that are going to consume some funding throughout the course of the year. You know, at the, at the 300 level, that, that might be a little high, but I would be supportive of maintaining the current level, with a portion of that going into these types of programs. I, my understanding is that to be chronic, meet that definition of chronic, chronically homeless, that you have to have a disability? So, so there.
Homeless for a year and either a substance abuse or mental health.
So there's a lot of folks out there that aren't going to meet that definition. And I think that kind of, to me, when we get to the crux of this, what we're doing is we're creating a funding source to help those folks where there aren't state and federal dollars available to help them. And, and I think that's something worthy of a community to do. I, the, the challenge grants, though, those actually can be used for, if I understand, it's, it's still only chronically homeless?
The, the challenge, I mean, housing first is chronically homeless, the rapid rehousing is a lower threshold than what the housing first model is. And so you could, you could serve chronically homeless with your rapid rehousing funds, but you can serve those that don't score a sign on the VI SPADA. That's the advantage of, they haven't been homeless this long.
Right.
Those that qualify for rapid rehousing typically haven't been homeless this long.
And I think we've got a lot of folks that, that perhaps meet the one-year homelessness requirement, but they, they don't meet the disability or the alcohol or the drug issue. So I, and I, I do think that, you know, we could theoretically find a place and put cots in it and have it open on Monday. It would not be, it would not work out very well, because we wouldn't have the, the system for intake and management and whatnot built by then. You know, reaching out to the existing agencies to help us, you know, to, to take the, the folks that are in the Salvation Army program right now, I guess I would want us, you know, do we have any idea what the costs would be for that? Because, I mean, we're talking about housing 86 people for, if a, not just a night, I mean, for a, a, a long period of time. You know, I kind of, I, I can't really commit to that without knowing a little more about what the dollars would be associated with it.
I, I don't know that any of us can give you that number right now. And if you look at the variety of things we've looked at, I mean, we've looked at all kinds of, of options. I think if you can focus on what you want us to do, then we can get that information back to you as quickly as possible, but it won't happen before the next meeting. And, you know, the first is a date with the Salvation Army, but I, I think, you know, I can't say that they would be willing to work with us or they wouldn't, but at the same time, I think there's an opportunity there that might, might open the door if, if they have a feeling that we're going to do something, that I take an action that's not an emergency action, so we're not doing emergency service, we're doing, we're, we're preparing to put in a program that is more permanent and commit funding for a particular program. And I think that's what, what's been missing in the first 90 days is that, that type of clarity. And I need the clarity where you want to go. You tell me what, what you want us to move forward on, and we'll try to get there.
So under your spending authority, you could cover.
$25,000.
Monday, probably Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night. Get us, get us through our next meeting.
Probably longer than that.
But, but the important thing is to get to our next meeting.
Yeah.
Where we can have an action item before, because we're, we're not going to take an action today.
Yeah.
I mean, this is just discussion.
Right.
So I, I'm fine with, with you going in that direction to get us to Wednesday, but I, by Wednesday, is it reasonable to get some cost estimates together on what it would, would cost for us to do that for, you know, a, I mean, we have to have some projection.
Yeah, and there are some hotels used to working with the different agencies, when we had to place individuals at night. Jim, you, you were, Jim was putting people in hotels at 10 o'clock at night.
I actually took them out, so I can tell you. They're hotels.
Yeah. So he knows where they are. And Hum helped us with that and Salvation Army both. So they're aware of those that are, and just realize, y'all know, I know you know this, but hotels up and down Ridgewood are full of individuals that are homeless. Individuals and families, because that's where my families are. They're living in those hotels up and down. So if anybody were to have a fit about that, that's where they are now, okay? It is where they are. So that is, that is the reality. But certainly they could pull together, the agencies, I think, would help us get, you know, good contacts and information together on what it would cost. And then the individuals move into those places, like you said, Rob, till Wednesday, so that they have a place to go. And then we figure out what's our next step.
And then perhaps the plan is to help, help get those 86 people into some sort of rapid rehousing.
If we have.
Without any additional intake on the part of the city, and then parallel to that, working on an agreement to, you know, have a Daytona Beach line on this.
Yes.
Spreadsheet.
Exactly.
Well, they've already assessed the individuals. Let me say that. Those individuals in the Bridge Bed Program have already had a VI SPADA done. They've already been assessed, they're already receiving case management. So that would not need to be done. It's just what's planned now, okay? So that, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
So in order to ensure that we have a place for this 86, these 86 individuals to go, is that the reason that we are reevaluating our total long-term plan, really? Or is it that we just believe now that this plan would be better than our previous plan? Because that's, to me, it seems as though we're making a long-term decision to solve a short-term crisis.
They're separate. I will tell you, for me, looking at the budget, when I looked at the cost, and it's going to be $3 million, that's when I started thinking, do we really want to do? And if we're on the hook for the long-term budget, that's a lot of money. And that made me serious, and when, well, actually, Jim brought it up, okay?
To me, what it does is buying us time to get that long-term solution vetted to a greater degree and to get those partners committed, because to me, it does not happen if the county doesn't put up the capital for the, for the construction. You know, and, and we don't have that commitment, and they really haven't been, been much discussion on their part in, in getting into that. But this gets us something that will allow us to provide, at a small level, but some level of assistance that we can maintain while we're still trying to figure out whether or not that's the right solution, and how do we do it in an affordable way for the taxpayers of Daytona Beach.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's, if we're moving in this direction, then we're moving in the direction of this is where our programming ought to go, because it's really based on a grant effort that's currently structured already. It's structured with the federal and state funds, it targets the same individuals, with the exception of the, the lower-scoring SPADA. But I don't, I don't see the necessity, if we can put together a program with these agencies that is successful to reaching the goal of zero homeless within a 2017 or 2018, I think we would be wise to try to move that direction rather than try to build something that has a more lasting effect at this point in time.
Okay.
And you're going to have to build into your funding. I don't want to, Kelly's absolutely correct. You are going to have to build into your funding if you don't burn, build a permanent structure. If you choose not to do that, a way for people to access services when we need them, okay? And that's a, a foundation that, that we don't have yet, that's got to be laid, and so we would have to do that. You've got to have that availability. Two things that are happening that they just got funding for that I think the new employees are going to start shortly, is that coordinated entry piece. Kelly, we haven't had that either in this county. It's been scattered. And we're all moving to a coordinated entry process so that when an individual is assessed and the intake's done, they are funneled to the appropriate programs. And then the homeless management information system, again, we're going to have a staff person, you see that on your funding right here at the top. It's new funding, new position, which is. It's new funding, new position, which is supposed to make the system work better than it has been. So these are two new positions that the continuum, the Commission on Homelessness got federal fundies, funding for. Um, I know one of the positions has been hired. I don't know if the other one has been as well. But again, it's supposed to make it work. But, but we have to be willing to fund the foundation, which is that emergency, you know, where do they go? How does it work? And then fund, you know, the other pieces. And if the county wants to come on board with something longer term and we get to the point where we just need something smaller, you know, as far as a shelter goes, you continue that conversation. But we are committing to do something now that's going to keep going on. And if we do the 300,000 and, and then do the hotel, you, you're at least responding right now to try to keep something moving forward without spending a lot of money on a hard building that, yeah.
Well, my greatest concern right now, as it is probably with all of us, is the 86.
Yes.
Who won't have anywhere to stay as of Monday. Is my, is it on? Testing one, two, three. My little light is on.
It's on. Ah, there we go.
Now you're on.
I was on, it was the volume. So my greatest concern is the 86, that we, we, we're responsible for them. We've already done the intake. We've already been providing for them and there's an expectation there. And I like to say tonight that it's nice to have options. The only thing we've discussed is a permanent shelter. So if the county isn't willing to partner with us, but we have other entities that are, I say let's go with it. Let's consider that. Let's consider that as another option. I'm not comfortable, as Commissioner Henry has indicated, as well as Commissioner Gilliland, with spending all of that other money for a permanent structure that we don't even know when we're going to build that. We've been talking about this and talking about this. It's time to either poop or get off the pot. I tried to be nice. And so listening, thank you. So listening to what the possibilities could be with already established programming with the, um, the HUM housing, the Rapid Rehousing, what have you, and the potential hotel and partnerships with hotels that'll give us reduced prices to be able to, to intake, it's just something I think we need to seriously consider. I mean, we have to consider the citizens that we represent and that these are their monies that we're actually giving to other folks who've come to our town. And we have to be conscientious of that. But we need to also be able to take care of them because they're here. And how do we do that? And how do we, we do that fiscally as well as respectfully? So I am open to other options. I'm open to giving the manager, um, the ability to proceed on money to help in whatever way we can with his budgetary, um, amount, uh, to move forward with that and us have an action item for Wednesday to move forward. It's nice to have options because we've talked about the same thing over and over and yet we haven't been able to do anything. Now, as Commissioner Woods has indicated, if later on the county, when we do, if we do this, this new thing, then the county should want to get on board. We're not asking them to do as much as they did before. However, if they don't, let's just move forward anyway and take care of those that are our responsibility. That's where I stand.
Well said, okay. Anyone else want to weigh in, Commissioner?
Yeah, I do. I, I just, you know, the one thing that we've learned is nobody gives us money for emergency shelter. It's not coming from anywhere else. And this is actually, I found this, this was the slide about stable housing. And I think this was at, it was the COC or is the.
It's, it's the committee.
Yeah, and the emergency shelter part is on there and we're going to need it. Like, we've got to figure it out. And, uh, from listening to the county, there's still the possibility of capital on the table. And listening to other cities, there's still the possibility of operating. So we're never, we're not going to get back to this point where we have these maybe offers on the table. I, I am of the mind to get something contractually back to the county that maybe gives us a due diligence period to go out and figure out, you know, maybe 30, so probably 60 days to see if these other cities that say that they want to give us money to help with a shelter. I mean, I know it sounds far, far-reaching and you guys are probably thinking, how are we ever going to get this done? But we, we got to have that emergency shelter component, I believe, to do everything else properly. And to just totally walk away from it without trying to, to put the pieces of the puzzle together, I just don't see it coming back. And I still see us here scratching our head thinking, oh yeah, we thought we were going to put everyone in hotel rooms, but there's a lot more than we thought. I just think it would be a real shame for us not to, to take this potential offer seriously. And I, I know, like, Rob and the rest of you, I don't want, we're not going to spend millions of dollars on a shelter by ourselves. Like, we're not going to do that. Like, I don't want to do that. But if there's monies out there that the other municipalities in the county are truly willing to give, I would like to find that out for sure that, that, we're, we're making assumptions that the money's no longer there or that it never was. I think it would be important to, before we walk away from this and go somewhere else to figure that out, so.
See, I don't, I don't think we're walking away from that. As I mentioned earlier with, with Mayor, I apologize. What we're doing is we're buying us time to get those deals done because it's been, what, years now?
Yeah.
That we've been working with the county on this and the county hasn't come up with anything other than if you commit to a million dollars a year in perpetuity, you know, or for 10 years, you know, something that was, we could never commit to. I mean, they, they literally, we might as well had to jump over the moon, you know? I mean, it, it was not a serious offer from them. But this buys us time to, to get through to, you know, a point where we can try and make that negotiation. It seems to me it's 10,000 bucks a bed. I said earlier, I said if we, if we can go through and get the county to put up 2 million bucks and we commit, you know, at some point in time, we'll commit 400 for 40 beds and, and commit to trying to get other funding for additional beds. If they'll agree to that, we might be able to move forward. But if they come back and say, you can, we'll only do it if you'll commit to 100 beds, we're dead again. You know, we're back to where we have to cover a million bucks a year. So, I mean, we just haven't been able to have, you know, a, a, a negotiating session with the county council in this case, you know, because the manager clearly doesn't want to participate at, at all. So, you know, we have not been able to have that conversation. This buys us time, more time to try and, and engage with them at a roundtable to talk about what they would be willing to do. Because so far, the only things they put forward that they'd be willing to do are simply unbearable for the taxpayers in Daytona Beach.
Okay, it, it, I, I concur with everything that he just said. And I concur with what you just said. Because heaven knows, I still believe that we need a shelter. I believe it in the worst of ways, but the reality is the partners have not stepped up. But what you suggest is that what we're doing is something that one helps solve our immediate need. Puts into place a, a plan that can move us forward down a, a healthy, uh, road where everybody's coming together with the continued possibility of, if, if we can bring the partners together at some point in time, which, you know, some days I lose faith that we'll really be able to do that, but I, I do believe that things are changing and they certainly will be changing in, by November. We just don't know how much. If they change enough in our direction, then we may have a partner. Um, so I, I think that if we move forward with, uh, sort of what is being kind of proposed here today, uh, giving him the option to bring us something on, uh, at our next meeting, we still have the hope that I think you and I really hang on to, even if it's by a thread, because I, I do believe in that, but yet, uh, moves us forward. We've, and everyone here is concerned about those 86 individuals. But we have to remember that when you go down a road of social services as a government, it's almost impossible to relinquish that because you become expected to do that.
As we're learning.
And that's, that's the challenge of, of going down this road. And, and I want to remind everyone that, you know, when we signed up, we really didn't sign up thinking that this would be an issue that we'd be dealing with in this way. Uh, but things happen and, and certainly, uh, well, most of us agree that it's important to our community. And certainly when I talk to constituents and residents, they still want us to do something. So, um, I'm trying to bring this conversation to a, some sort of conclusion or some, some point where we're all on the same page. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think what you're, what you've outlined is, number one, for us to move forward with, uh, trying to secure housing, intermediate, immediate housing, uh, for the 87 homeless beds that we are responsible for currently. And at the same time, bring an action item forward to, to address, um, some kind of a grant program that might be available with, um, the current providers in, in the city to extend this program until such time as we can reach conclusions on whether or not you want to move forward with a, um, long-term homeless shelter. Is that, I'm trying to see if that's some.
I think that's what I'm trying to say.
That's what you're saying, yeah. And I, and I want to make a comment regards to the county and the funding. You have, last Wednesday, you received a budget that was a realistic budget to operate the shelter. And that's been one of the complaints that you've received from county staff. You know that, is that you have nothing hard or concrete in front of them. My concern with y'all was the fact that, that, and I wasn't here and I didn't watch it because I knew I'd get too upset, um, was that, um, that you had the opportunity to say, this looks good to do, and, and I got the sense that wasn't it. What I'm getting at is if this budget is realistic, then that's what you take to the county and say, this is what it would cost to operate. What are we, 100 beds in this, in this budget, Jim? This is what it would cost. This is what the buildings would cost, all right? This, this is the plan that they've claimed they haven't had. It's in front of you. And the staff spent a lot of time pulling it together. So my point to you is that if this is a valid plan in your mind, which you did not say is valid, I'm not saying approve it to fund, but we need to give some kind of stamp of approval to take this, talk to them, this is what it would cost, this is what we're asking for you, you've got those numbers in front of you. We have that. If you've got an issue with what's in here, we need to talk about it at next Wednesday's meeting, is what we need to talk about. Because if you want to pursue the shelter option, this is what needs to be taken to the county, okay? That's what you need to do, okay?
I, just to clarify, there are several options. We prepared a program for you that identified what we thought was a cost-effective way of implementing the program that had flexibility. And that program was not the program that was outlined in the Marbit study. It was the same program with modifications, but for location, locating on our property rather than the county property. It also included, um, housing that was, uh, not necessarily long-term cement housing. It was modular housing and that gain gave us flexibility and also lowered the cost. So there are, there are two long-term programs out there and you got to tell me what you want to do. Now, I know that, I know for a fact, the county has said, uh, initially they would fund, uh, the capital costs associated with the shelter and they initially said they'd provide the land. And they said they would not, under any condition, fund operating cost. So those are the given things. And if you look at all the documentation that comes out of county government, everything they do budget-wise or action-wise says we're not going to fund operating cost of homeless shelters. So it's, I don't think they can say it any louder or clearer. So it gets back to, there's still about a million between, between 800,000 and a million five in operating costs for a shelter if you build a shelter for that purpose. And once we build it, we got to be sure we're going to be willing to fund the operation because I think that it's going to be difficult to get everybody to commit to fund that operating cost. So I just want to.
Is that per year?
I want to be clear so there's no misunderstanding about what we prepared and, and gave you versus what was in the Marbit study because it's, it is very similar, but it's different.
My, my question, that's per year?
That's per year.
It's going to take 800,000 to a million five to fund a year.
A year, every year.
That's what I'm telling you. That's why I have said to y'all, this is a big chunk of change. And, and if you decide to move forward, you cannot hesitate. If you're going to commit, commit. And that's what it is every year, every single year.
I don't say that to do, to discourage anything because there's always opportunity to maybe get grants and do different things and, and create partnerships where some of that cost is mitigated. And we, some of that is contained in the proposal we prepared. And that's why it's less than, than what we saw in those other studies. But I didn't want any, I don't want anyone to leave here today with an idea that we're going to do X, Y, or Z. I just want to, I want you to know, everything's on the table, whatever, and if there's any question about any of it, we need to explore it if we do it in another meeting or whatever. Because I don't want to go down a road of trying to, you know, rent bill coalitions, get contracts together and, and do things when I don't have the support of the commission. If I got support of the commission, we'll do everything we can to make it successful. And right now, we're going to move forward with a Rapid Rehousing program and bring it back to you at the next meeting. If I'm wrong, tell me.
That's correct.
Okay.